We have our next guest, we have Raul Rodriguez, City Councilor, District One. Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing this morning, Gene?
Doing great. And part of his community service, Louis Reyes had to come to the radio station today.
Being disciplined, you know, just that's what happens.
You lost the coin flip.
I lost the coin flip.
Actually, what I thought, Gene, was the mayor last night decided to turn it over to the councilors and ask any of us that want to come and give the mayor's version of the recap of the city council. And so he asked if anybody volunteered, and I volunteered.
Oh, good.
So then this morning, I thought about it as I was getting ready and thinking about the radio show. I says, you know, I'm going to invite our recreation director so they can throw hailstones at him, just like Roswell got yesterday. And that way, he can brief us up at some point in time on some of the recreation stuff going on in our community this summer to try to keep the kids active. But Gene, before we start, I'd like to, I'd like to say that if we can keep Uvalde in mind, those elementary kids and those that were killed yesterday, keep them in our thoughts and prayer throughout. Because, you know, as I look back at our community and how blessed we are, and how, just prior to this show, the new incoming superintendent was here along with Mrs. Davis, is how blessed we are in our community, the way our schools operate, and the way they run things. And to some of us that may not get around there very often, the procedures and policies that we have in place to enter the schools, because I was looking at the pictures this morning of the police officers and them doing their canvassing, and I wonder, you know, behind those walls, if you go to the public schools, the first door you enter, second door you enter, you have to be acknowledged. And that process kind of thins out, you know, intruders and things like that. So we should be very thankful and pray for those people in Uvalde that, you know, they will be able to get through this. And of course, prior to that, Buffalo and all the shootings that we've had in our, in our country. So I'd just like to keep that in our thoughts and prayers today.
Sure. And I know that questions come to law enforcement and to our first responders. If something like that were to happen here, are we, you're never really prepared, but hopefully, when you talk to law, the police chief, you can talk to the fire chief, plans and processes are in place to be ready.
And we discussed that a little bit last night about, you know, our first responders and emergency services that we have in Artesia. And so, you know, we're pretty fortunate. You know, sometimes we, we see other things that we can nitpick and, and pick apart. But for the most part, I think that we live in a blessed community.
Yeah. Well, and it, one of those things that came out, Townhall.com was reporting this, was that the, the law enforcement officer that ended the situation, took out the shooter, was a Border Patrol.
Yes.
Part of one of their tactical units. And that unit rushed in. They didn't wait for backup. They rushed in.
They took charge.
Took charge of the situation.
And that's what, that's what the news was reporting, because, you know, that is near a border town. So luckily, they have the enforcement there that they can back up other agencies there to lend support.
Yeah. So I'm glad you mentioned that. And I'm sure it was one of the issues or one of the topics that was assessed last night.
Yeah, we touched base on it. When we get down to committee reports, police and fire, among some other reports, you know, and I'll share those with you in just a minute as we go down the agenda items. But, you know, we, we care about our employees and our, and our officers, first responders. We care about everybody. I mean, Artesia is a unique community in itself, period.
No, it is.
Who even care about football coaches and basketball coaches and track coaches and soccer coaches and volleyball coaches.
Recreation supervisors.
Not just because of sports, but because they're individuals that touch lives, period.
That's right.
And our ministers, our youth ministers and children's ministers.
Well, Louis, let me ask you this. I think this is one of the important aspects about your program, the programs that you have at, at the recreation department. You see kids from all over the community. Your programs are there to try to get kids involved so that they're not sitting at home and they're not interacting with other kids or parents.
And that's why we've always had the cost. It's only 70 to five bucks for the whole summer. We're going to feed you and take care of, you know, take care of them. And that's what it is. We don't want, I'd rather have them in my building rather than out in the streets or playing video games all, all day long. We don't have video systems there. So, you know, they play games, you know, they'll, not just the new games, but they'll go play everything from duck goose to steak ball. And I mean, and then just regular games that we have. And, and it's important for them to come in and know that they're going to be safe. Again, it's, you know, I hope it never happens. I pray that it never happens, that they just come into our building. It's like you said, being prepared. I think, I don't know if prepare is the right word. I think everybody's, we say we're prepared, but are we really prepared? We don't want it to happen because when something like that happens right away, it's like, you know, I was prepared, but not for it to happen today.
Right.
Or at this moment in time, or this way. We do have, you know, some of the greatest police and fire anywhere, you know, around. I, you know, I think we, we're blessed to have a good community of people that care. And it's just, we want to be sure that the kids are all safe and, and taken care of. That's why we've been doing this for, for a long time.
That's right.
And gosh, get them out to go play ball, get them out to recreate, you know, don't just leave them, leave them home. And it's not just kids from the community. We get them from, from, actually, we got some from Roswell and Carlsbad, parents that come work here. And rather than leaving them in Carlsbad, they'll, they'll bring them over here. And so that's good. So we enjoy that. And it's fun, you know.
So that's, that's a great thing. I don't know if, I'm sure some people have thought about it. I hadn't thought about that. But yeah, if you, if you live outside Artesia, but you come to Artesia to work during the day, sign up your kids for the recreation program. And you know, for that period of time, they're not going to be sitting in front of the computer screen or staring at the phone. They're actually going to be out, you know.
TikTok or YouTube, you know.
Whatever those things are.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. There's so many things I want to joke about, but I don't want to.
Man, I'm holding back right now.
I know, I know. All right. Well, let's, where do you want to start on the?
Okay. I want to start with what has taken or transpired since the last council meeting on May the 10th. On May 17th, we had a special meeting to pass interim budget.
Okay.
So that, that went through, unfortunately, myself and Councilor Townley were not there. But the other six were able to take care of business and pass interim budget, which will now go to Santa Fe for approval, and then we'll pass the final budget. A couple of good things that happened in our budget this year is that in going over the, the budget, we were able to have changes in police and fire in their budget and, and compensate them for their hard work. Then, so that passed 6-0, and, and so the interim budget is in our clerk's hands, and will be headed to Santa Fe for final approval and DFA. So last night, basically, we began our meeting with a quorum. The only member that was absent last night was Councilor Moreau, who was out of town. Then we began with new requests for facilities. And so I'm putting a plug in for everybody I can while I'm in here. But Main Street had requested use for Main Street from first to seven. They've got a topic, hot summer nights. So June the 16th, July the 14th, and August the 18th, which is the third Thursday of each month, they are trying to open up Main Street for vendors.
Okay.
So they will be open, you know, there to try to help our, our local businesses, boost their economy and so forth. So that's kind of a plug for Main Street. We had a consent agenda, which on our consent agenda, we were able to do some things, that we were able to do some hires. We hired a librarian, an equipment operator, one, an apprentice mechanic. And then we also accepted the resignation of two employees. So that kind of went pretty good. We're still needing, there's 20 openings in the city roughly. So if people want to apply for a job, those that are needing a job, the list of jobs are on the website. City of, I go to cityofartesianm.gov, and you can see the 20 listings on there, and you can apply online. So there's a plug for recruitment for our HR department that, you know, go in there. And those of you that are looking for a job, there might be a job that might appease you. We're looking from firefighter MTs, police officers, equipment operators. We're looking for customer service now. Instead of cashier, we've changed the job classification to customer service. We have code enforcement. So we have several jobs out there that hopefully these people will, will get to look at and, and get enticed to apply for a job.
Now, don't forget, you've got a recreation specialist job.
They get to work with me. I mean, what more do you want? I mean, there's a good benefit there.
That was recreation specialist? See, I misread that. I thought it said recreation supervisor.
Well, we can do that.
We could certainly work on that. I've been there too long.
What would the recreation specialist do, for example? Since Louis is here, you know?
Well, we have a recreation specialist who does most of our sports programming. This one would do more of the, the social program and children's programming, after school programs, summer programs, you know, little programs like that, special events. They'll come in and just get, they get to play games all the time. And a lot of people say, well, they just get paid. Well, it's hard when you're having to deal with kids, work with them. But I mean, you're nurturing, kind of like a school teacher. If you ever want to be a school teacher, it kind of falls in the same line, because they do after school tutoring, everything. And it's kind of a demanding job. You know, a lot of times, we just think that recreation is just, they show up and, and play games. But it really isn't. It's trying to set those kids right, setting them, you know, and they're starting to find a field there. And the deal is, is for us to make sure that they know, hey, do I really want to play basketball? Do I really want to play football? You know, and it's not just football, basketball, baseball. Sorry, guys. But there's piano players. There's people that want to be artists that we got to also take care of. There's kids like that. And that's a place where we give them a chance to, to evolve, to, to decide what they want to do, what they want to, you know, be in life. And, and we do, we've had kids that have turned out to be doctors and, and whatnot. But, but I'm excited, you know, for this summer. After two weeks start, then it's like, oh, Lord, let the summer be over with.
So do you have to have a degree?
You don't have to have a degree. You have to have a little bit of a recreation experience, working with kids, and high school diploma.
And is this a full-time?
It's a full-time job, 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday, every now and then you have to maybe work some nights if you've got programs there. Adam does a lot of that, the night program. Sometimes you got to work weekends. There are some holidays, the fun holidays that we get to work. Fourth of July, maybe we do some runs or something.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a really fun job. It really, really, really is.
Do they, do they reach out to you, or do the HR department at City Hall?
They could go, as Councilor Rodriguez said, you go to the artesianm.gov, then there's a little box that says services or community. Hit that, there's going to say job. Always, it's easier to just hit all. But if not, there's a spot that says Artesia Center, and then just fill it in.
When you hit, when you hit all, all the, the.
All the jobs.
The job will be there in the blue, and then you hit that hyperlink, and it'll take you to that.
Excellent.
But if you hit the rec center or the Artesia Center, then you won't have to go to those. You could just say, hey, this is where I want to go. Don't get deterred with another job. They're distracted. And they're all great jobs. They're all great jobs.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So after that, we went down our committee reports, and then we went to personnel. So we approved a resolution last night, 1790, amending some position classification titles, just a formality that we're, we're trying to go through. Then the, the most important one probably that everybody wants to hear, if you're a city employee, was the approval to begin a 3% salary increase on June 1st, 2021, for all departments. It's at police and fire. And the reason it stated that is because they were already approved prior at the special meeting. So it looks like everybody in the city will, will be compensated a little bit this year. We're very fortunate and, and happy that we're able to do that for them. And, you know, I just want to say a big thank you to all our city employees. You know, sometimes you can't give them that increase, but, you know, a pat on the back sometimes is better than nothing. Then we went on to our public safety, which our police department, which Chief Kurt Roberts gave a report. The chief has been really, really busy with memorials to fallen soldier, fallen police officers. They got to make a trip to Washington DC in honor of Corporal Tom Frazier's name. And then they were up in Santa Fe last week. And then on June the 10th, they will have a ride to remember organization that'll come through Artesia. There will be a memorial out at PSC in his honor that they'll unveil. So that was kind of, you know, kind of a neat thing. And then we had, the next one was the fire department, which have a proclamation and a resolution declaring extreme or severe drought, and the restriction in sale of fireworks in the city of Artesia.
So did that was presented, or did that?
That was presented and passed.
And passed.
Yes, sir.
So what, what does that mean then?
That means that there are certain fireworks that you're not able to light within the city limits. Now granted, the county didn't pass theirs. And if you see, most of our fireworks stands are just a little bit outside our city limits. Except, I think, the one over there on, on Main Street, on West Main Street. But there's certain fireworks, aerial fireworks, that are not able to be displayed and lit. Now, understand that the police department, the fire department, the fire marshal can't be everywhere at one time. So we're asking the public to please use your discretion on the use of fireworks. Respect others. Respect your neighbors. Respect the vacant lots. Because, you know, sometimes you say, well, I'm going to shoot this firework over towards that vacant lot, and it could be dry. You just don't want to create a hazard. And remember that, you know, we are still responsible. And remember, this is your community. So if, if you do start something, you're just taken away. Because the cost of those firemen to go put that fire out, there's an expense to all that. So we were able to do that. Remember that we just can't control everything. Just try to be, use common sense. It is, so we, this, this resolution is good for 30 days.
30 days.
So in 30 more days, we will have to reaffirm it or rescind it, which will take us through the July 4th weekend. So we have to do it in steps. But we do do this for the protection of our community, and, and we don't want to create any fires. We don't want to create any issues.
So the fireworks stands that are in the city will be able to open, but there'll just be a limit to what it is that they.
Correct. And so the fire marshal will visit with them. And, and, you know, he helps them. Now, you can only tell them, but in the city limits, they will not be able to sell that, those.
Some of the aerial stuff.
But outside the city limits, they're, you know, they're a little bit different. They have a little bit different procedure and ruling. So we can just advise them, but they can, you know, they can do, and people can go, it's just like this, people can go to Texas and bring them in. You know, you can import them in here. So just, just understand what is legal and what is available, and just make a fun out of it. I mean, make sure you go see the firework display. If you don't want to spend, if you think the, the cost of fireworks is getting out of hand, just don't buy any. And just look at, look at our fireworks display that's going to be put on by, by the community.
Yeah. No, because that, there's a chance to see the big aerial fireworks, all that. Well, and it's just been so dry that you get into an empty lot, or you even get on a, on a house or a piece of property. I'm sure the firefighters are, that's, that's like a real nervous time of the year for them. They're on edge, ready to, you know, take whatever call happens out there.
And I do want to back up. During our period for hearing visitors, we had some guests there. Luis Mendoza was a spokesman for the pickleball. Pickleball is a recreation sport that is picking up rapidly. And so he gave us a good presentation about what pickleball is, and has come forth and asked the city and challenged us to assist the organization in coming up with some pickleball courts. So we were able to hear that during that conversation. And thereafter, we had a conversation with the mayor and, and a little bit of the council as to maybe in the near future, opening up a, some kind of a town hall meeting with, with all the new recreation that's out there. You got the frisbee disc golf, you got pickleball, you got a lot of people that are playing cornhole. Something that we can do in sharing our community to try to have some, some recreational, basically on the weekends. Our thought process is if we can get some of these things off the ground and going, you know, you can have lots of tournaments, have a lot of attract visitors for the weekend. And so we're, we're looking at that very seriously. And so the mayor was open to entertaining maybe a, a thought process. We do have a recreation commission. Sometimes people don't attend those as we'd like. But nevertheless, we, if we can get the community involved, it's just like, it's just like having a meeting and having people there thinking outside the box. Let's think outside the box, what we can do to revive our community, and not just only revive it, but go forward, come up with new ideas, come up with, with some ways that we got to be in the thought process that we, as city government, we want gross receipts. So how can we keep, how can we get people into our community, get them to stay a night or two, spend our money with our local merchants and motels and things like that? So that's kind of a revenue stream that we're thinking of down the line is trying to get that process going.
And our next recreation commission meeting is, I think, July 18th.
Okay.
And they're open to the public. And that's a time to come and share with us, hey, you know, we'd like to see this, or we need this.
Or, or how about that? You guys are doing a great job on this.
We would just love to hear that.
Yeah, because you probably never hear that.
No.
I mean, most situations you don't. You only hear when there's an issue and you don't necessarily.
And I think that's everywhere. You know, you always hear the complaints and, you know, hey, I heard you did this, or how come this, you know, we don't hear the other ones. And, you know, but, but that just comes with the job.
Well, let me ask you this. We have these cement structures. Are they handball courts? Is that what they originally?
They're actually on tennis courts. They have a tennis, oh, but, but pickleball is on, is played like on a similar basis.
So you can't repurpose the old cement handball things?
No, the handball courts, no. The two handball courts that we got, of course, the one out of JC Park is dilapidated and stuff. And then the one over on, on 13th Street, that structure is up. But there's a lot of complication in trying to rid of it.
Lot of red tape.
Because of the fact that the mural that was on there.
Well, yeah.
Painted by the late Noel Marcus, and the funds that were used to paint it, and you just have to do a lot of backtracking, a lot of history research. And so I remember one time that, that we had talked about at the council was, does it become a detriment, number one? And is it, is it a safety issue? And we just kind of stopped after that because of the, of the mural and.
Well, yeah, you want to preserve that. So all that. But I didn't know, because I don't know anything about pickleball. Do you actually use a pickle?
No. Actually, I would. But no, it's, it's kind of a.
Is it a classic?
This, this is, I'm going to leave that with you.
What is pickleball?
It's a mix. Yeah, it's a mix between tennis and kind of ping pong.
Okay.
Paddles are smaller.
Okay.
The, the ball is more of a wiffle ball, but, but it's, it's played the same way, trying to hit it over a net and.
And believe it or not, he told me, Louis did, because he, because he pointed some of us out, because he knows all of us. And, you know, he worked for the, for the US Postal Service here for many years. So he knows a lot of people. He said that he's getting his grandkids involved, and they're about, about the age of 11. He said, I believe that he mentioned last night that there's even some five-year-olds playing. He says, could you imagine me at my age getting beat by a five-year-old, an eight-year-old, 11-year-old?
Yeah.
Or whatever.
On pickleball?
On pickleball.
Yeah.
And so there was a, there was, they, they brought about 10 to 12 people to the meeting last night, which was good, because we need just as much information about what's going on in our community that we don't hear on an everyday basis. Generally, what we hear is business, you know, trash, you know, water, sewer, you know, streets, that type of thing. So it's good that they came in and, and they, and they gave us some information on there. And believe it or not, they've been using Faith Baptist Church.
Okay.
And, and we do have a pickleball court out at JC Park.
Okay.
We do need to do some infrastructure upgrades on it. And so that's why they came to us, to share some of that information, because they use a layer on, on their flooring that's similar to a tennis court. Those are the easiest to convert over to a pickleball court.
Okay.
So we, that, that's kind of challenged us.
Yeah.
In our role to try to accommodate that growing sport, so that we're able to furnish them a place to play. And he said that their contingency is growing. He says, you wouldn't believe it, but he was talking about Las Cruces and Albuquerque and some numbers between 300 and 400 on any given three-day tournament. He said they have singles, they have doubles, and then they have co-ed doubles or mixed doubles.
So it's becoming quite popular then.
It's becoming quite popular. So it's, it's one of those that you have to take it, soak it in, try to accommodate it in your, in your lifestyle or a place that we have for them, to try to give them the opportunity again to, again, bring in, bring in some tournaments and things, just like the frisbee disc golf people that want to come in.
Now, Louis, I'm working on an idea maybe you could help me with. And it's, it's a combination of cornhole, pinball, and miniature golf. So we need to, we need to work on that. And maybe that's something we can have, you know.
This is a setup.
Hey, that's even, that's.
I just want to know what you're going to call it.
I know. That's what I need help with.
That's even too much for me to, I mean, I, gosh, but I think I could come around. Hey, my deal on the pickleball, they used to come over to the rec center. We used to have them all the time. But the issue there was, hey, yeah, y'all could play this day and this day, but not this day. Or you.
You got a lot of other things going on.
And they were going real good. They did have a great group that was coming in right before COVID, and then COVID hit, and then they wanted to come back. And the deal is, is right now, we're fixing to start our summer program. So the whole building is used. And then we got basketball nights, and we've got volleyball. So there was nights and days they could, so it was kind of hard for them. And they are, they're a great group of people. And there's some pretty good ones there. Louis is a very good one.
Different ages, different ages were there. And the thing that, that kind of I saw in the audience, because I'm always looking out there, as you see married couples out there. So, you know, the, the competition's there, and you got to be careful, because you, if, if, if you beat your wife or your wife beats you, you may not get dinner. You know, something, something's going to come out of it.
Or you may get beaten.
That's.
It's competition.
Well, as far as tennis courts in town, I know the schools have their tennis courts at the MacChase complex. Does the city have any out of JC Park?
At JC Park, yes, sir.
But, but those get utilized for tennis?
Correct. So we have to be careful, because we did have, we did have a pickleball court that we revised and spent some money on out of infrastructure. But it's not in the best shape. In other words, some uneven surfaces and things like that. So you got to be careful. And then you've got liabilities and things like that. And so we, we are looking, and they have been talking with our infrastructure director, Byron Lanfair, to try to come up with a reasonable, you know, what's a reasonable solution to try to accommodate them. So we did talk about that. But then, again, every time you talk about bringing something like this, it's always funding. So we have to look at the budget, we have to look at C. So I'll even make a plea out on the radio, if there's anybody out there that is a generous donor that would like to see towards that, that recreation program, give City Hall a call.
Yeah.
And recreation, it's, it's a, it's a healthy health style, you know? We got to get out there. There's a lot of, as you can tell, I don't do very much recreation outside.
His recreation is going to McDonald's or something like that.
I do, but only when the ice cream machines open, only.
32 ounces get pretty heavy.
Well, they do, yeah. That's why you have to keep it full, so that you get the full weight effect on all that.
Exactly. But we've got to get, get out there, you know? We've got it, we've got to go out there. And recreation, there's a lot of, a lot of, we're, I'm not saying anything bad. We're just kind of behind everybody else. You know, while everybody else is building this and that, we're still way behind over here. And I always say, I, I used to tell people, hey, man, I remember when I was younger, you know, man, everybody was wearing bell bottoms. And, man, I couldn't wear bell bottoms. And finally, next school year, I come wearing bell bottoms. And everybody's wearing 501 Levi's. And here I am, man, I thought I'm in style. Then the next year was.
But we do have some nice, I mean, there's a lot of nice parks. The city has a lot of nice parks. You have the Aquatic Center now, which has been a huge investment by a lot of folks to have that there. And then I don't know how many people, I know a lot of people utilize it, but.
Right.
The, the, not the JC Park, the Eagle Draw Walkway, because there's been a lot of additions that have been made to that. And a lot of people like to just walk along the Eagle Draw there, the, the walking trails that have been created. So there have been some things that have been.
And we got new basketball courts that were built over by JC Park at the little, and it gets utilized. So they're utilizing them. We just, you know, need to start getting more and more. And, and that's where these people come in. I mean, if we don't hear you, we don't know. Come to our recreation commission meetings and say, hey, this is what we'd like to do. This is what we need. And, and that way, we could kind of get the ball, ball started and, and, you know, move into that direction. But recreation's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me go in with infrastructure.
Okay.
Because good news and bad news there. We are going to begin to work on the project on 20th Street.
Yep. I got the, I got the note here.
Did you get the document? So, you know, that will begin June 6th. And Byron projected it's about 100, well, 12-month project.
Okay.
And so he's got it broken down in phases. And so he's got it broken down in phases. Uh, phase one will be from, uh, Grand to Via Drive, and that's 108, 105 days. Phase two will be from Via Drive to West Man Street, which will be 90 days. And phase three will be from West Man to Hermosa, which will be, uh, 82 days. And so, uh, he's got it broken down and he does have an additive alternative of 84 days. So we just asked the public to be patient. Um, uh, an additive alternative route is going to be Grand to Main. Uh, so, you know, be patient. Uh, I know we don't like these projects because it seems like, you know, you can't get out, but, uh, you can go from one end of town to another end of town in Artesia in five minutes, according to my navigation system in my vehicle.
Yes.
I can leave the dealership at 300 North First and everywhere I go, it says five minutes. I don't know why, even to my house is four minutes. So everything's within a five-minute period.
How fast do you drive, Raul?
Hey, I, I learned from, um, from everybody that you have a speed limit on Mahone and that little light tells you how fast you're going. So you got to stay under 25 there.
I'm close to Walmart. It takes me about an hour to go get a gallon of milk.
I know, I know. You have that problem too.
But, uh, we, we were able to hear from the infrastructure and, and, uh, then we heard from, no, no, nothing from our city attorney. Our city clerk just gave, uh, updates. We did have a limited personal matter that we had to take care of in executive session and that was all taken care of. So, uh, we, we have, we've been pretty active. We've been pretty busy. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, that this, this council, uh, we have been very active, very busy, a lot of meetings going on, uh, budget meetings and personnel meetings, infrastructure, community development, those things. So we do a lot of things behind the scenes so that when we take action at the meeting, it flows pretty smoothly.
Sure. You mentioned earlier that the interim budget has been passed and sent to Santa Fe for final approval. Uh, where, where does the budget have us end up at the end of the year? Is the city going to be?
We're going to be actually.
Above or below?
No, we're going to be above and, um, I'll give you a quick report.
Okay.
We got one. Summer gave us this. Uh, through, through the general fund, through the, through April, uh, 30th of 2020, uh, we have a beginning, uh, cash balance of, uh, 23, 873, uh, 720. So $23 million goes to $24 million.
Okay.
So the budget and finance committee, uh, will, we've put a threshold there. So some of that, uh, additional funding, uh, we'll be able to start looking at things that are in need and, and try to stay above the threshold. Um, our grocery receipts is what we rely on. So we look every month of previous months of the grocery receipts. So, we try to keep everything, uh, you know, intact and we want everybody to, to spend as much money as you can in Artesia.
Yeah.
You know, that, that helps us, um, do our process and, and run our business. So, uh, we're in, in good shape, you know? Uh, uh, we, we always want to be in better shape, but I mean, uh, that doesn't mean that we're just going to go out there and start spending things here and there. Uh, we were still pretty, we, we, I want to give credit to the department heads and to Summer, uh, because they were able to get together to try to keep things intact and to try to stay, uh, where we've been, not, uh, have a Christmas wish list, uh, sort of things, because we still have to, uh, do other things, uh, you know, uh, after that, the 20th Street project, we're going to do Hermosa Street and then we're going to do 26th Street. So that's, that's a lot of money out there. It's going to be something like $22 million out there.
Yeah.
That we're going to do that project that we've discussed in the past before. So, uh, you know, those things, we need to have money in place for that. And, uh, remember if we don't have the money, then we'll have to go out to bond, uh, things like that. So, uh, we, we, we are, we are doing everything we can. Uh, this administration is, is, is taking everything, uh, you know, intact and we're trying to, to do diligent for, for our citizens because we are accountable to them. They're the ones that elect us.
Absolutely. Got about 20 seconds left. Any, any last words?
One more thing real quick. Uh, remember the 9/11 Memorial Guns and Hoses Charity Softball, uh, game Saturday at Brainerd Park on the 28th between police and fire?
At 12 noon.
Yep. Are you, are you going to be there?